Two members who are on their way, but we have a quorum, so we're going to begin. We will get out of here before eight o'clock tonight. So, starting at 5:00 PM, we're going to have announcements and review the agenda, which I'm doing now. Then we'll vote to appoint Michael Luth as police chief.
Is that why there's so many people?
It might be. Vote to ratify employment agreement, and a vote may be taken. Then we'll have a public comment period. And then the town manager's report, where we will consider the line item transfers for FY 2018. Consider changing the location for the precinct one polling condition, polling location from the senior center. Consider approval of a one-day beer and wine license for First Parish Church for the Second Annual Groton Neighbors Potluck, to be held on Sunday, July 22nd. Consider approval of an all-alcohol one-day license for the Groton Historical Society's Farm to Brew Event at Williams Barn on Saturday, August 25th. And update from the town manager on assisting town of Dunstable. We also have a joint session at 5:30 with the planning board to interview and select candidates to fill the vacancies that were not available during the election season. We also have several ongoing issues, other business. And minutes, we will be entering executive session to consider some union agreements. And then we will come out of those executive session to vote. So, a lot to go on. Let's start with announcements from the board. First of all, welcome back, everybody.
Welcome back, everybody.
It's been a fourth FY week, and everybody had a good fourth FY week.
Welcome back to you.
Any announcements from the board?
I have one announcement, Mr. Chairman. There's a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Trust. Anybody interested in serving that, we'd ask you to get in an interest form by Wednesday, August 15th.
All right, another vacancy. Volunteer, it's awesome, look at me, just copy good stuff. All right. With nothing further, let's take a...
Actually, I have an announcement.
Please, go ahead.
I didn't know whether to gaze on or not. There is a meeting tomorrow night. The library and the finance committee will be meeting together at 7:00 PM at the Legion Hall to discuss the results of the building envelope study for the library, which may have some implications for future needs to spend money on the library.
Yes, that's actually on my calendar. I hope that everything clears up, I'll be there. Mark, is that co-posted?
I did not post it.
No, so...
But you all, I think, did get the materials, the ballot materials were sent to all of us.
You can attend the meeting.
A link to all.
We'll attend the meeting. All right, so let's continue on with our first agenda item. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, the board, the select board, had taken a tentative vote to appoint Michael Luth as our next police chief pending a successful contract negotiations, background check, and physical and all that sort of fun stuff. I have to tell you, Boy Scout does not describe the background check that we received on this Luth.
The uniform.
So, everything came back fantastic. We successfully concluded contract negotiations. So, I'm going to ask the selectmen, the select board, this evening to vote to officially appoint Michael as our next police chief. And then the town clerk is here to swear him in. And then I'd ask you to ratify his contract and enter into that agreement that you all received it in advance, and I know the board had no issues with it. So, I'd ask you to take that action as well.
I'd like to say thanks to Mr. Deegan and Mr. Avad for working with the potential chief on the contract. Appreciate that. Becky?
I'm very happy to make the motion to appoint Mike Luth as our next police chief effective...
A week from today.
July 16th, 2018.
I'll second that. It'll be a three-year contract through June 30, 2021.
Mayed and seconded, is there any discussion? Well, we have a lot of public here. I'm going to ask, is there any comments from the public before we...
Yeah, I have checked.
Can you get the microphone?
Oh, this isn't a wedding?
That's ruled out of order.
Mr. Geiger, would you like to make way to your seat?
No, it's okay, we're sorry. Nobody rules.
All right, seeing no further discussion, call for vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Michael Luth as our next police chief, please say aye.
Aye.
I think I heard that.
I'd ask the board to vote to ratify the contract as well.
I move that we ratify the contract between the town of Groton and Michael Luth from July 16th, 2017.
July 16th, 2018.
It is. 2018 through June 30th, 2021.
Second?
They've retroacted now.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? Sure?
Maybe after.
Call for vote. All those in favor, still going to say an aye?
Aye.
Again, heard unanimous. Congratulations, chief. Why don't we do this in public, right?
Yep, that's why the town clerk is here.
Do you and Michael Luth solemnly swear that faithfully and expressly discharge and perform all the duties of county attorney as the appointed police chief of the town of Groton, Massachusetts?
I do.
Will you bear true faith and allegiance to and uphold and defend the constitutions of the United States of America and our commonwealth of Massachusetts? In all parties, the authority over the government of the United States and others' commonwealth by force, violence, or any illegal or unconstitutional method?
I will.
Will you obey and be bound by such rules and regulations as are now or may be established by the town in its police department? Do you solemnly swear that you will never betray your badge, your integrity, your character of the public trust, always having the courage to hold yourself and others accountable for their actions? Do you and Michael Luth hereby accept the position of police chief for the town of Groton?
I do.
Congratulations, chief.
Now, Mr. Chairman, the official fun part tonight is to turn this over to Mrs. Luth and ask her to officially pin the badge on our next police chief. I've been holding on to this for a while, I tried to learn.
Oddly, it didn't fit.
Please, please, please.
You got your vest on?
This is my godfather, Robert Carlson. World War II veteran from the Navy, ninety-two years old.
Here he is, what? Ow!
Now you know you're all focused on it.
Okay. There we go. You can hook it. All right.
Would you like to say something?
Yes, absolutely.
If you want to stand, just grab a microphone, or you can hold that one. Hold this for the people at home, right? Okay.
So, Judy has the...
Judy has a good microphone, we use a good real microphone.
That's for the people at home, it's on.
Would you like to say something?
Yes, absolutely.
If you want to stand, just grab a microphone, or you can hold that one. Hold this for the people at home, right? Okay.
So, Judy has the...
Judy has a good microphone, we use a good real microphone.
That's for the people at home, it's on.
All right, I brought notes, I wouldn't forget anybody, but I'm going to forget anybody. I'm going to forget somebody anyways. It's 26 years in this career. First of all, I'd like to thank my family for being with us throughout my whole career. My, I was a police officer roughly eight to 10 years, depending on my child, before they were born, so I told a lot of the guys tonight that I was going to come in a suit. But I scrambled together, I wanted to have a Groton uniform for tonight because it was important, and wanted my family to see a badge printing ceremony because I never had the opportunity to 26 years ago. I wish my parents, both my parents are long deceased, and I wish they were here to see this day because I think they'd be very proud. This is the town I was born in, I was raised in this town, I couldn't be, I couldn't think of a place I'd want to work more. I didn't get here by myself. I had a great upbringing, I had two very supportive parents, I had a whole neighborhood full of supportive people, whole town of supportive people. In my law enforcement career, I was lucky enough to start as an auxiliary police officer here in Groton. They sent me to the Reserve Academy, which ultimately got me for the Townsend Police Department. And at the Townsend Police Department, I had two great mentors, three great mentors, and three of them are here tonight. My first, my first training officer was Major Watson from Massachusetts State Police. He was a police officer in Townsend at the time, and the quick, try not to make this too long. First night I rode with him, it's really hot out, and we go, and it's a double arrest. We're on the side of the road, and two people in handcuffs, he tells me to go get something out of the car. And I walk over, and I had locked us out of the car. I don't know if anybody knows Major Watson, he's not a guy with a good sense of humor. It's one of those stories I haven't forgotten. In addition to Brian, Dave Prophet was probably my de facto training officer. He retired from the Townsend Police Department as a deputy chief, and he's sitting in the back of the room. And I spent more hours training with him than I probably have anybody in my, in law enforcement career, and he made a trip down from Maine today. Chief Bill May, he, I went and asked him if he would send me to the full-time police academy. He sponsored me to go at the time, they didn't have a job for me, and he, that takes a lot of responsibility for him to say yes, as I'm using the town of Townsend's name, their equipment, their badge, everything. And he was gracious enough to allow me to do that. And when I came out of that full-time academy, I had a full-time job with the town of Tinsborough. I went and spoke with them, they offered me a job, and I actually went back and spoke with Chief May and said, they're offering me this job, I really want to be a police officer. And he looked at everything, he says, you'd be crazy not to take it. I don't have a job for you, the finances in the town of Townsend at the time, just, they weren't there. And he didn't know when there was going to be a job, and he told me, you've got to take this job. And that was tremendous. Back then, everybody was taking civil service tests, Groton was a civil service town, no one was getting hired. Actually, Townsend was laying off a lot back then. I was lucky enough to work in the town of Tinsborough, three or four great mentors out of there. First chief I worked for there was Charlie Kornopolis. Charlie Kornopolis was community policing before the term was coined. He was a person that could talk to anybody, could talk to the baddest guy, or could be on, you know, speaking with a small child. And he was, I come out of the police academy, trained all tactical and all that, and he, I watched him, like, you could talk to people nice. You know, he was just great, Charlie Kornopolis was fantastic. He was replaced by Chief Machelli, who was another great mentor of mine. Rich Burrows, the chief in acting, I know he's in here, he was my sergeant in Tinsborough. I've been very blessed to have lots of chiefs in my life. And even after, when he went to acting, he's been a mentor of mine in this whole process. Chief William Mulligan, even though I didn't have the opportunity to work for him, he, he came and took his own time to mentor me in chief process, and he wanted to help me become a chief. Didn't even know me, I didn't work for him, I met him briefly, I was already in my federal job at the time, but he, in retirement, came out and gave me, gave me his time. That's pretty amazing, all from one town. All, just, these towns, all the people have helped me. I was lucky enough to, very lucky enough, to come out of the federal service and work for Jim Marino in the town of Lunenburg. And I've been there for 14 years. And there was a point in my career where it didn't look like I was going to get a promotion for a sergeant position, and there was a lot of wrangling and stuff, you know, politics going on. And I was just going to give up and say, this, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight the fight. And he came and pulled me aside, said, you have to, you deserve this, you're supposed to have this job. And I see greater things for you in the future, and if you don't fight for the sergeant's job, I'm not, you're never going to be in the position to be a lieutenant or a captain or chief later on. And so, he's the person, one that in the last 14 years has changed my professional career. And from then, every time, ever since I've been in some sort of command staff role, has incorporated me in everything he's done. He's brought me to every chief's meeting he's gone to, and to everything a chief does, he bring, he had me sit with him and go over, and he's the reason why I was in a position to be such a strong candidate for the town of Groton. And I can't, I can't thank Chief Marino enough. I owe a debt of gratitude to a lot of people in this room, and I just want to make it clear, I didn't get here by myself. I'd like to thank Chief Don Palmer, leaving a department in a position that Groton Police Department is, is enviable by any chief, particularly a brand-new chief coming in, not being a chief before. This is a job that a lot of people would want, a lot of people didn't want. And I was lucky enough to be able to come into this position, and very lucky to come after a chief like Don Palmer. I'd also like to thank Jim Cullen. Jim Cullen and I went through this process together, he's been a consummate professional, he's been a, we're developing a friendship. He's run this department many times in the absence of Don and Palmer, and he's run the department since Don Palmer is retired. And I owe a debt of gratitude to him. And also, I'd like to speak to my new comrades. I look forward to working with you and getting to know every single one of you in the next few months, and try to keep this department going in the great direction it's going. I'm a very fortunate person to come into a position, into the department, at a time like this, and I really look forward to it. Last group I'd like to thank is all the officers I've worked out through, I mentioned all the chiefs and people in really good positions to get me to where I am, but all the officers I've worked with, whether a patrolman, an officer, a dispatcher, I've had a lot of great people in my life. And I really, I've learned a lot, I've benefited by being in contact with those people, regardless of rank. And most recently, I've been fortunate to work for 14 years at the town of Lunenburg, and I consider them my brothers and sisters. And I really appreciate all, everybody's, everything that people have done for me. Let's make sure I didn't forget anything. I'd like to thank the board of selectmen, excuse me, the select board. I wrote it down for you. And I know your names, but I wrote your names down on my paper because I'm nervous, and it's a big night for me. But, this was, this was quite a process. We went through a process, and I would like to thank the selection committee and everybody that was on any of the panels that we went through, and ultimately, I appreciate being picked. Mark Hadad, the town manager, he has been super helpful, this is a new situation for me, and made it, made it a lot less painful than it could have been. Thank you all. And Mr. Hadad said that I could only talk for six minutes, so I'm at my limit, so thank you very much.
Well, we have a surprise for you. About nine o'clock tonight, there's a whole bunch of fireworks.
I will be there. End of the sermon, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike, welcome aboard.
I know, I probably didn't even need them.
Everyone in the audience, my wife's up on TV, it's awful, very distracting. Thank you very much.
She's my mate, thanks.
We're very happy. Thank you, good work.
Good luck tonight, guys.
See you later, Mike.
I can announce, I can announce.
I guess the town manager's report doesn't mean a lot to people.
No, has died in the war now? Mr. Hadad, it's now a public comment period.
Yes.
Public is a lot, but, but do you have anything else to say? All right, we got a couple of people. I saw Bud's hand first.
I'll go instead there.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
I just wanted to...
Can you shut that door in the back, please?
Sorry, it's going to be a little noisy out there.
Anyways, I'm chair of the personnel board, and I just wanted the public to know that there are two openings currently on the personnel board, and that, you know, they can go online and fill out a committee interest form, or they can actually send a resume into the HR director here in town. And just a brief overview, the, it's an advisory role to the board of selectmen, the town manager, and director of HR, and a couple of interesting things we've worked on was, in fact, the search for the police chief you just saw, fire chief search. We've also done comp analysis for the town manager, police chief, fire chief. So, it's an exciting thing to be on, and we're looking forward to having some resumes come in so we can fill out the committee.
Yeah, the personnel board is a board that the select board does rely on, time to time, as well as the town manager and HR director. So, it'd be great to have two candidates who are willing to come forward and volunteer some of their time. It's, what'd you say, a little intermittent? What's the time commitment?
Except for those special studies, minimal.
Yeah, so it's, we appreciate the expertise, occasional questions, and then sometimes a study or two when the time hits. So, it's a, it's a good way to contribute, and especially if you don't have a lot of time, you can still be effective for us, so we appreciate that. I saw a lot of your hands, Ms. Allen, we'll let Ms. Allen go, and then Berta, and then Jack.
What are the qualifications to be on the, on the board, on the...
Personnel board?
Personnel board, yes. What are the qualifications?
It would be helpful if you had some personnel experience from either being a general manager in just a company, or obviously if you're personnel, HR, in the HR system, but just general management, many times you've touched on most of the stuff that personnel people, for the personnel board.
Berta?
Hi. My request tonight is for the board of selectmen to either change a policy, amend the same policy, or interpret and follow the present policy, which I will allude to later. Years ago, a select board member was not re-elected because he introduced, he introduced ties and votes to the board. And I thought we had learned a good lesson at that time, but I guess I was wrong. For the last two to three years, our select board has initiated subjects like Groton welcoming a being a sanctuary city, attempted interference with the Boy Scouts of America with, through their correspondence, and the placement of all the welcome rocks, which is, is today introducing a national politics into our small, like I like to think tranquil town. These measures, I feel, are divisive. It's not the, within the bailiwick of what a boy's selectmen is supposed to, how they're supposed to function. They're supposed to take care of local issues, and as far as I'm concerned, only local issues. It's not to be used as a bully pulpit. So, I'd like to cite the policy that we presently have, which is under the board policies and standards of conduct, which, which states, E, accept the office of a selectman as a means of unselfish service, not benefit personally or politically from his or her board activities. And D, which I should have spoken to first, he or she represents the entire community at all times. And I think when you start bringing in national issues and national politics, you're certainly not representing all the, all the people in the town. So, I would like you very much to take a look at that policy, either amend it, change it, or whatever you can do to be sure that these things don't happen anymore and cause more divisiveness in the town.
All right, thank you, Berta.
Thank you.
All right, Jack was next, please.
Thank you. Mark, would you scroll down on the agenda, please? Thanks.
Where?
Down, there's a section where you talk about other items?
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Can you go up just a little bit? So, no, up a little bit, sorry. Can you go up a little bit? Thanks. Great. So, today, I was looking to see if there was anything on the agenda today that I was interested in. And I, and for the most part, there wasn't anything I was interested in coming down for, although it was wonderful to see the new chief get initiated. But then I saw this list of roughly 19 items under ongoing issues, and a lot of them I'm really quite interested in. And I didn't want to miss them in case you had a debate where I might be interested in contributing. At the same time, it's probably true that you won't talk about most of them, or even any of them. And so, I'd like to ask you to think about removing these from your agenda, so that residents don't see this and believe that they either need to come here and then find that you don't talk about something, or risk not coming here and having an item be discussed, maybe even voted and acted on. And I think that would be just a far better way of conveying to the town what you're about to do. I recall, I think, that this list was put up because there was some, there were some things that transpired that the board members were not aware of, and this was, I think, a way of making sure that every week, board members were brought up to date on all the issues. I think there are probably other ways to do that, rather than to have a permanent set of items on an agenda that the public will probably be interested in, but may never be discussed. Thank you.
So, if I may, this list was put on, not necessarily just for us, but for the public, to be aware that there are ongoing things that we may have updates on, and that if they're interested in these, they want to come down for that, they're welcome to. In general, we do not take a vote or debate anything on these, that would jump to the, to a regular agenda item. For example, this is for status updates, what's going on with the Four Corners Sewers Repayment, what's going on with gold, gold compilation. It's more to keep the public appraised and aware, as part of our policy of continuing to make people aware of what's happening with some of these projects, not necessarily because we're taking action on these projects. Usually, there are things we've already taken action on, but we have to take action on, and to keep it in our mind as well, to make sure that we don't lose sight of them, and make sure that we keep them in front of mind when we do. So, if anybody else has any comments about that, as a point of clarification, but they're, they're not going to come off because they're valuable to the public to recognize, as well as us, what's going on.
Another thing I want to add is, this list, and it being on this agenda, is an outgrowth of the team-building exercises that were done by all the members of the board, let me, although I sat in the audience, back in late May and early June, as a way to better understand what are the things we're focusing on, and it was agreed that in some cases, not every member of the board was at the same point of understanding of where we were at with a lot of these items. So, I just want to clarify how, how that came about.
And Becky?
So, I agree that I think it's useful to keep this list, however, it does say votes may be taken, and even as you were speaking about it, Barry, you said, we don't vote.
We tend not to, right.
And I think it might be wise for us, under the open meeting law, to actually change that and say, status and information updates, brief discussion only, because I think the spirit of why it's there is not to actually make decisions other than sort of possibly get some ideas out on the table that we would discuss further as a real agenda item, and it would be more accurate. And I think more in keeping with the open meeting law, if we change that to not say votes or action may be taken, but that this is for informational, status update, and brief discussion only.
Absolutely. And as a chair, I will make it a effort to make sure that we don't do anything, take action or votes, unless we put it on a future agenda item, as it's very easy to public.
Do you agree that we should change?
I think there's some legal requirements for having that on there, that I'd like to check with council on.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should check, because I think it could go either way with the open meeting law.
If you notice, even under public comment period, it says vote may be taken. So, I think there's some cover-all issues that we use that for.
Right, but we might be better off to make it clear that we do not intend to vote on these, and that substantial discussion is also not what we intend on those.
I think we should take a good look at that.
I agree, I agree. Bring that back. All right, anything else from the public? All right, we are...
Mr. Chairman, I would...
We are timed for our public for our meeting, yeah?
Yeah, but I, the town clerk has been waiting, and I'd like to take item number three up before you go to the 5:30 agenda item, if it's okay with you. He has been here all day, I'd like to allow him to address that issue. It's okay with you?
It's okay with me, is it okay with the planning board?
They didn't hear you.
It's all good. Hearing no objections, we'll move forward.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. It was quite the crowd you had here earlier.
Yeah. Yeah.
The reason I'm here is, as you know, the Senior Center Building in West Groton is going to be torn down. The Senior Center Building is where Precinct One has been voting, so obviously we'll not be able to vote there until we get a new Senior Center, which we're, I'm kind of working on a year's timeframe that we'll be without a Senior Center. So we do have some elections between now and a year from now, and there'll be two elections this fall, and an election, the Town Election next May. And I'd like to ask the Board to designate an alternative polling location for Precinct One. So I'm going to recommend that Town Hall, this, this room, be our location, but let's walk through some of the, I think, bare alternatives that we have. The things I've looked at are the West Groton Fire Station, which has, you know, a couple of bays that we could use that would be big enough to hold it, but the parking is an issue. It's a very narrow street, it'd be all-on-street parking. I just don't think that would work. Legion Hall, similar. It's, it's pretty much a parking issue over at Legion Hall. I've talked to Chief McCurdy about using the center fire station. He and I both agree that while it could probably work for parking and access, his concern, and I would share that, is if an emergency happened, while we have, you know, a flow of voters coming through, it could be, it could be problematic. So I agree with him that we probably not use the center fire station. Which pretty much leads us to Town Hall. And in Town Hall is a second-floor meeting room, which is a bigger room, which would be nice, except access, you know, thinking accessibility access, you know, wheelchairs and so forth, is limited to a, the elevator, which is not the fastest way to get people in and out. So leads me to, I'm going to ask that this room be used as our polling location for Precinct One. What that means is, for every election, I need the room the afternoon before, the day of, and the morning after. That's for setup and cleanup, and then obviously the election. And the dates are September 4th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day, November 6th, which is a Tuesday in November. Preceding that, as we did two years ago, there'll be early voting. And again, we use this room for early voting, which worked out really well. I'd like to use that again for that two-week period, plus the election period. And then the third election would be next May, May 21st, which is the Town Election. So that's what I'm asking the Board, if they have any comments or questions about that.
What's the challenge with using the country club for all three precincts? Is there a space issue once you get all three, or is there some legal requirement?
There are, first of all, parking is tight as it is with two precincts. But even inside the building, I don't think we can fit a third precinct in there.
I agree with you, I just want to make sure that we said it.
No, we did look at that, too.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of this, this building, we would make sure that the employees park over Prescott, so that this is available, all parking in the parking lot out back, the side street, and the shared parking lot, the place, or former fire station, would be available for voters, so no town employees would be parking in this building during the, the building will be open for business, but we'll make sure the employees park outside.
Any, yeah?
So when we did early voting at the last election, all three precincts' early voting were here, is that correct?
That's correct.
So there's no change in that?
No change in that. And that's over a two-week period. So we, we had about forty percent of our voters vote in the early voting, but it was spread out over two weeks, so there wasn't a logjam here.
But that's only allowed for national elections?
It's allowed for state elections. So not for primaries, not for Town Elections, just state elections. So November qualifies.
Correct.
Anything further? Do we need to take a-
The Board, the Select Board chooses the polling location, so you would need to vote to authorize this as a temporary poll location, and then the Town Clerk would be required to notify all the voters, registered voters in Precinct One of the new location. You have to do that X amount of days in front of the-
Yeah, the requirement is twenty days ahead, but given it's summertime and vacations, I'd like to get that notification out by August for us, which would be like thirty days ahead.
Becky?
And so the Monday nights will cause a space crunch for meetings of our Board, because there's often already Boards meeting upstairs, but do you have that figured out?
I have a plan in place. We could do one of two things. We can move our meeting to either Legion Hall, or the Light Department, we can ask the Light Department if we can use their meeting room, if it's available. Or maybe the room upstairs will be free at that time, we'll have that constructed, and we'll be able to work out, because the Board of Health meets the first and third, and the CPA meets every other week. So depending on those schedules, we'll work it out for that two-week period, I don't think I'll be a problem.
But you just said something. The Light Department is, was that a possibility for the polling place?
I didn't ask them, considering we had this building and the parking would be the same parking issues. So I did not, I did not ask them.
I think where I, where I gauge, I would feel more comfortable with Town Hall than the Light Department. Just, you know, trucks do come in and out of the Light Department, I-
Good point, yeah. I see that, as Mark just pointed out, I do see the, the major inconvenience to be the Boards and Committees, and specifically this Board on the Monday nights.
This Board can accommodate voters.
Awesome.
I think they're duty and I think so.
We can always not meet, Mike, so we can be not be in check.
Mr. Governor?
I move that we approve Precinct One polling place locations identified in Mr. Bouchard's memorandum of dated June 25th, 2018.
One second.
Been moving second, any further discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing now a call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Heard that unanimous? Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning Board, I'd ask the Planning Board to call their meeting in session to order.
Mark?
Oh, no.
Have we not put in that on? I'll call the Planning Board to order.
Mr. Chairman, there are two vacancies on the Planning Board. We advertise the vacancies as required by both state statute and Board Policy. There were two vacancies. We are, the Planning Board interviewed two candidates, and both candidates are here tonight, Annika Nelson-Rips and Gus Whitmire. They're here to be interviewed by the Select Board for appointment. These appointments will be through May 21st, 2019. At that time, at the election, there'll be two, three-year seats and one-in-one-year seat that anybody can choose to run for, but you're actually appointing them to the next election. You're not filling, you're filling two vacancies on the Planning Board. So the purpose tonight is for you to interview the candidates, and then working jointly with the Planning Board, appoint them to, to the Board effective this evening. And if they, if they are appointed this evening, the Town Clerk is ready to, Town Clerk's office is ready to swear them in.
And there was no change in the new charter with that? It's still the same?
It's a state law.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Great.
There are two vacancies?
Two vacancies. One caused by the resignation of John Geiger, I don't know where he went, and then the other one caused-
He doesn't either.
And the other one caused by Mike Vega, who is moving-
So perhaps I could introduce the two candidates to-
Thank you.
Annika Nelson-Rips, in the front here, and in the far corner, Gus Whitmire. We interviewed both of these candidates at length at our last meeting, found them to be quite well-qualified, and we promote them to you for consideration. And we're open for questions, and I've already prompted them, primed them on that, so if you'd like to ask some questions, go ahead.
Our reputation precedes us. Does any member of the, of the Select Board have questions or comments for these candidates, one or either or both? Becky?
I have some questions, because for one thing, we are on television, and I think it's always useful for the broader public to understand some things about how our government works. So I would ask each of you to just give us a brief statement about what you think the, what your understanding is of the role of the Planning Board, and what you think you bring to it.
Okay. My name is Annika Nelson-Rips. I currently work as an architectural designer. I do professionally, I work in doing feasibility studies and zoning studies, and also design and construction administration. So I'm familiar with how our, our local and state government can influence how we build our built environment and thus create our community. It is my understanding that as Planning Board, I would have the opportunity to help shape that for Groton. My personal belief is that we are a strong community, and a, a small community, and that the, to really embrace some of the, the shared values of our agricultural history, and our, the size and scale of our community, zoning laws, and, and how we build is really important to doing that. So that is why I'm here, and what I think I can offer.
My name is Gus Whitmire. I live up on Skyfields Drive. We moved here ten years ago, 2008. Before that, I was in Boston for twenty-two years, and before that, I grew up in the town of Acton. I am the owner of a small business about a mile down the road from Shaw's on Sandy Pond Road, and we import packaging from overseas for the use of semiconductors in the electronics industry. I'm also a partner with my brothers and sisters in the building that sits at Orion Park, right next to Shankland's facility. It's in the town, it's in the town of Air, but it's right near the Groton border. I helped my father put up that building, so I'm familiar with the process that construction goes through with Town Boards, and I found it fascinating. It's been a while since that happened, but I also reconstructed a house in Boston and went through the process with the City of Boston on how to do that. I mentioned at the Planning Board that that involved excavating cellar into the back bay water table, which was complicated, but also fascinating. I don't know if many of you remember the, the, not the Groton Herald, but the other paper? What was the?
Changes its name?
The Landmark, yes. I used to write, I used to write a, a column in the Landmark where I interviewed Grotonians for their memories, and I've also written a couple of books on the history of the town of Falmouth, where I grew up in the summers. And I have a real interest in, because of those projects, I have a real interest in the history of the transfer of land through deeds or certificates of title. And so that's why I thought it might be under the purview of the Planning Board to, you know, investigate deeds. As I understand it, the Planning Board is not involved in formulating policy or interpreting laws and rules, so I, I would imagine myself as just translating for the general public what the rules, what the regs say, and helping them as best I can.
Thank you.
Josh?
I guess this question would be for both of you, again. What are your feelings about potentially rezoning additional business lands within the town of Groton?
I, I am very close to the Four Corners, and I know there's a lot of land down there that is already zoned industrial. So I think that probably makes sense to me to continue. At the same time, I'm also a resident of Groton because I love the history and the character. So I'm not sure if I'm pro or con, but in, in spots, I think it definitely makes sense, especially Main Street, for example.
I, I think that there's some real opportunities. As you drive 119, there's a lot of opportunities for, for business growth along that road, and urbanization is unavoidable, but I think that it's really important that it be thoughtful, and that we be really careful about how we design these districts, and, and where. So I would be, I think that, yes, I am, I am pro rezoning and offering more opportunities for business, but I think it has to be very thoughtfully done to preserve the overall character of our, our town.
Josh?
I just have a couple of comments. One, the Planning Board, Gus, is a quasi-judicial board, and it does generate Town Code, i.e. bylaws, that are enforceable. So there is a piece of this that does, does have to do with the making of rules, so to speak. But it'll come, you know, I learned it, so you're going to be able to deal with it. Now, while I don't know where I am exactly, I know where I came from. And, you know, George in Takashi didn't put me up to this, but I can't emphasize enough the importance of attendance. We might not think of it as what it causes, but it really makes people who have been scheduled to come in and present, or get an opinion, to suddenly find out, oh, we don't have a quorum, we ruined your night, you got to come back again. So do everything you can to let, especially Takashi and, and the Chair know when you're not going to be able to be here. You know, you have a family emergency of your stick or something, that's not predictable, but business travel and those kinds of things, help them out, because they can't schedule very well if they're not lining up, if they're going to have enough people for a particular type of transaction. Enough said.
Awesome.
So I guess my, my question isn't necessarily a specific one, so much as I would love to hear what your thoughts are about the zoning regulations in particular, which are under the purview of the zoning, of the Planning Board for, for crafting those. It's been quite a while, I think, since there was sort of a wholehearted review of, of the documents. Personally, I think parts of them are more than ready for some remediation, if you will. What are your kind of thoughts on that process, particularly in changing or updating the zoning to reflect more closely what's actually happening in some parts of town, whether it be the Town Center, or Lost Lake, or West Groton?
I can say that I'm not as familiar as I will be on all of the zoning. And I know that at the state level, there's currently some discussion of changing some zoning, some overreaching zoning laws. So I think there's, if that goes through in this legislative session, that there's a real opportunity to change how we react to a changing Massachusetts system. So, but in general, I think that, that there is no such thing as stagnation, we are always growing and changing, and we always have to be really thoughtful about how we change and, and what we keep, because that's really important. That if we're keeping laws and bylaws that aren't serving us, then they need, they do need to be changed. So I am all for doing comprehensive review. I love that kind of stuff at work, so that's something I'd be really interested in digging into.
Great, thank you.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the various zoning districts in the town, and I, I wouldn't want to put forth any position. I would just exercise my best judgment to make the changes that are requested. I mean, I do like the current zoning that is in force in terms of the two-acre residential or the five-acre pork chop lot, which I'm on. I think those both work well. I don't know yet where the industrial or commercial zones are, but I'll do my best to learn.
Anything from the Board? Does the Planning Board have any comments? Does the planning board have any comments? We've actually done.
I know, we've done this. It's an open meeting. It's a joint meeting, so feel free.
So, Mr. Chairman, if the board and the planning board are ready to appoint, I'd ask somebody to put one name into nomination and then you need to do it by roll call vote. So your name and the yes. Correct. So that's how I'd ask the board to proceed and then the planning board, it's a joint vote, but you have to do it by roll call.
Just for clarification, the planning board is seven members?
There are, yes, there are seven members total. There are five members here this evening. Four members here this evening, I'm sorry.
I would add, there is a there is a sense of urgency in that certain applications before the board do require a super majority vote, that means five of the seven members. And right now, operating with five members, we have one member missing as as we do this evening, that still constitutes quorum, but for public hearings, a center for special permit, it we can't hold it, we have to continue it. So it's it does cause some distress from our board's point of view in processing things. So we feel very fortunate that we had two interested candidates that have some experience, that have a lot of desire to come forward and serve on the board.
Clarification, who is the member who's not here?
Ten, clerk's office.
Okay.
I think as these are nominated, we need to identify which.
No, it's two days, it's to May 21st. They can choose what seat to run for when they pull papers.
This is just to.
This is just to May 21st, both of them.
All right.
And there are letters in the town clerk's office, so if the board and the planning board votes them tonight, they can go get one in and effective immediately.
That would be great, a meeting at 12.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I'm happy to non, oh, what's that says?
Nominate.
I move to nominate?
Yep.
I move to appoint or move to nominate?
Nominate for appointment.
I move to nominate Anika Nelson-Rips for appointment to the planning board effective today until May?
21st.
21st.
2019.
2019.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Heine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Geiger, aye.
Peace, aye.
Menugian, aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Carolyn, aye.
Burke, aye.
Wilson, aye.
Arringer, aye.
Those are unanimous between both boards?
Okay.
So noted.
I move to nominate for appointment for to the planning board, Gus Woodmeyer, effective today until May 21st, 2019.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Heine, aye.
Deegan, aye.
Geiger, aye.
Peace, aye.
Menugian, aye.
Perkins, aye.
Burke, aye.
Wilson, aye.
Arringer, aye.
I heard that unanimous as well.
The ayes aye.
You guys want to go into the town clerk's office? They have the paperwork in if you just wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering for the planning board. Appreciate that.
I'll call for the.
And move the planning board adjourned.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
And the planning board adjourned. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, back to my town manager's report. If you go to page 11 in your packets, you will see a list of line item transfers. As you know, the National General Law, the municipal modernization act recently updated that allows the select board and the finance committee to vote to make various line item transfers in the last quarter of the fiscal year or the first 15 days of the next fiscal year.
Right, well, the from May 1st.
May 1st, so not quite the last quarter, last two months.
So we have until the 15th.
Correct. So your meeting tonight and the finance committee's meeting tomorrow night, so we have a list of transfers. We would like to transfer money $5,000 into tax title foreclosure, $5,000 into tipping fees, $4,400 to country club expenses, $3,300 to mechanical mechanical inspector salaries, $75 to building inspector wages, $700 to ZBA wages, $74 to water safety wages, and the money would come from assessa salaries, $10,149, planning board salaries, $5,000, country club wages, $1,400, and mechanical inspectors' general expenses, $2,000. The total transfer is $18,549. I'd ask the board, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask the board to vote to authorize these transfers.
Any questions from members of the board? Allison?
Mark, can you just clarify a little bit what the country club expenses were that went?
Yeah, the $4,400, we had a really good last season, we had a really good summer camp and we went through a lot of wages and then we had some issues this spring fertilizer needs and things like that. So it's just a it's mostly a cleanup. We're taking $1,400 out of wages and moving it up to expenses. I will be giving the board a detailed report at the end of probably at your next meeting on the 23rd, once Patricia closes out the books on the 15th, to show you exactly where we stand with total expenses for the country club versus total income. And I think we're really close.
My my question was also on the country club. Are you done?
Yeah.
You said it was a really good year last year for the camp?
Last summer.
How about this year?
We were just into it, we just got started.
But sign up?
Oh, yeah, we we they have an average of 35 kids a day in the summer camp, which is perfect. Memberships are with regards to full memberships, I think we added one. Day passes for the pool has been very good as well. We we used to get excited when we have a $1,000 green fee day at the club. That is now becoming the norm, so things are really picking up over there.
So does this transfer still keep the country club in its self-sustaining state?
Close. Like I said, I'll have a report for you on the 23rd of July or the first meeting in August to let you know exactly where we stood last fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members of the board? Josh, John, you guys have anything?
No, I'm okay.
Any questions from the public? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Thank you. Everybody else is busy signing documents.
That we approve the transfers as presented for fiscal 18. Great.
Yes, thank you.
Second?
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Heard that unanimous as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to approve a one day beer and wine license for First Parish Church for the second annual Groton neighbor spotluck to be held on Sat- Sunday, July 22nd from 5 to 7.
So moved.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Anything from the public? All those in favor of the one day beer and wine license for the First Parish Church, Sigma St., aye? Aye. Any opposition? Heard that unanimous as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to consider approval of an all alcohol one day license for the Groton Historical Society's Farm to Brew Event at Williams Bar on Saturday, August 25th from 2 to 8.
So moved.
I'll second again. Any discussion from the board? Anything from the public?
I have a quick question.
Thank you, Ellen.
Can the chair second a motion?
Yes.
I can actually make a motion.
Oh, the chair, I thought a chair could not.
No, I'm a member of the board, so any board member can make any motion.
Okay, thank you.
I just prefer to let my colleagues do all the work. All those in favor of the one day all alcohol license for the Groton Historical Society on Saturday, August, excuse me?
25.
25th, Sigma St., aye? Aye. Opposed? Heard that unanimous as well.
Mr. Chairman, today, select board member Geiger, Dawn, and myself met in session with the Dunstable Board of Selectmen to discuss whether or not I would be able to assist the town of Dunstable through their transition. I will tell you, the the select board, the selectmen in Dunstable share the board of selectmen's concerns here or the selectman's concerns here, and I may be confused between both, here in Groton about, you know, that I work for the Groton taxpayers and that should be first and foremost and that's the most important thing coming forward. So they would prefer that I do the work for them outside of my job here in in Groton. I think I agree with that. I think John agreed with that. I don't want to speak for him, I'm sure he'll speak for himself. One of the things that we talked about is putting sort of a deadline on this so that it doesn't go on forever. We talked about end of September to allow for a process and I would also assist for them in any recruitment that they do, assist in their recruiting. We talked about taking a vacation day in Groton here or there, where I'd be totally off the Groton clock, pay for Groton, my vacation, my earned time, and I would work for Dunstable. We talked about evenings and weekends and they they seem to be amenable to that. So based on that, I think we I think they share the board's concerns about a clear delineation of duties where my my number one priority, of course, is the Groton, town of Groton, because that's my employer, but they'd be willing to work and if we get to a point where it wasn't working, we'd end the relationship right away. So I don't know if there's anything, John, you want to add to that? I'd be happy to hear from the board and answer any questions that you have.
John, do you have anything to?
Well, I see what 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 we're being asked to do and what I think if Mark's willing, it would be a good thing if we could do is just be good neighbors to our friends at I think that what they're looking for is very reasonable. I know Mark is qualified to do it. Mark and the Dunstable Board of Selectmen are in agreement that to the extent there's any compensation to Mark for his activities, it'll be between Mark and the town of Dunstable. It will not in any way impact finances in Groton. And we did put in and I think we'll get Mark to within the next couple of days, write a memo of understanding that we can send back to Dunstable confirming what we generally agreed to. And and that's it. We're going to go, if you approve this, till the end of September and a couple of weeks before that, Dunstable and somebody from this board and and Mark can sit down again and talk about from Groton's perspective, is is more of this okay? Or from Mark's perspective, do you want to keep working this hard as as well as, you know, Dunstable's thoughts and make make a sort of a group decision on whether going further than September. I'm not overly concerned about the July and August because we don't meet every other night and and so forth. And Mark would use some of his personal days or vacation days to to do this, which is in my mind, he's he's free to do it and and it should all work pretty smoothly.
And there's there's nothing in the charter or in town manager's contract that prevents this, correct?
You need to press. You need to vote. You say no, it's no.
Right, but I mean, but aside from that, aside from approval, there's nothing delineated.
Not that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Just in his employment contract.
Right, exactly, okay.
It's in the charter too.
Becky?
So, John, last week when we discussed this, you had mentioned we would need to have a list of deliverables and also we had generally discussed what's the amount of time involved here? Did you get a sense of that from your discussion?
Well, I believe the amount of time is going to be largely what vacation time Mark wants to contribute to the effort because he's not going to use any time where he's using any of his at work time for Groton.
Unless there's an occasional phone call which happens.
So I I'm not sure how how many hours they're going to use or or not, which was why I advocated for, I don't want to see this go more than the end of September until we review how it's working.
But so do we think it's 10 days worth of work? Do we think it's three days worth of work? Do we think it's 21 days worth of work?
I'm I'm going to guess it's, and I'm doing that, it's probably between 15 and 20 hours maybe.
Not even.
No, I think it's more than that. I think maybe over the whole time.
Over the whole time?
It's in, it's in a 40 to 60 hour kind of range.
Over three months. I agree with that, John, based on the conversation today.
That would be Saturdays nights. Part of what they're asking him to help with is is sorting out some of the tactical issues that are in need of some attention and and then contributing to their development of more of a strategic strategy of of how to proceed in the organization of their government, their town government.
One of the first things you want me to do is come up with an org chart, something that simple.
So I think the statement of work is what they ask him to do within the time that he's willing to make available because I talked with him about you need to prioritize what you want Mark Mark to work on and and they agreed with that. So, you know, we don't have an exact statement of work because I don't have the feeling that they are entirely aware of some of the things that need to be worked on.
So.
So what we're doing is simply identifying hours and a stop point to to revisit how it's working.
But we haven't actually identified hours. You're just you're leaving that up to Mark, how many vacation days and how much of his time he's willing to contribute.
And I think that's reasonable.
Between nights, weekends and vacation days, you know, 20 hours a month is not that hard to come up with, actually between weekends and nights, although I would hate to see you burn out over many, many seven day weeks, but.
Believe me, my wife doesn't want me to burn out either, so I will.
I don't think Mark is necessarily doing this for the money.
I'm not. I'm doing this to help them out because I want to.
My feeling is you can help out a neighbor. It doesn't hurt us.
We have a lot of interests that are aligned as well and I think that there's a lot of there's already a lot of knowledge built into things we have to deal with that it there's already a huge onboarding. They're getting a big benefit, honestly, in having Mark involved.
And as Mark said, if we, the board, determine as this unfolds that it's just taking too much of Mark's time, we can stop it.
How would we determine that?
We can re.
If I don't do my job, you'll know. And if I feel like I'm not doing my job 100% for you, I'll back out. My my priority, I want to make this very clear to the five of you and to the town, my priority is the town of Groton. I've been here for 10 years. I like it. I want to continue to do the job.
And we can reconsider this vote at any time.
I have another question after the conversations that you had. One of the the reasons you had suggested last week a benefit of doing this was possible regionalization opportunities. Is that discussed?
Well, you know, we didn't talk about that. As a matter of fact, they they want to be sure that this is this is for to assist Dunstable and their government moving forward. If something comes up that I talked to them about and knew about, great, and and I think they have an open mind to discuss things, but the the number one priority is to try to help them go through their transitional period. And there are some issues that they need to deal with. They have a town meeting coming up that they need some help with. They have some issues within their water department that they need some help with. So I I feel like I can help them and I want to help them. And if I if I find that I I'm not helping them or it's starting to be a detriment to this town, I'll stop because as I said, this is my priority. This is my job.
Well, and I think we we made it pretty clear that Mark is not going there with any assignment of anything from the town of Groton.
Correct.
He's an individual consultant to them in his own time for a period until we revisit and see how it's working out. I admit it was very clear to them that if I were writing a contract, it would have a statement in it that said, you cannot hire Mark.
They seem to rejoice at that, no?
So.
Josh, did you have anything?
I, you covered it actually.
Okay.
Comment, both of you.
Allison?
I'm happy to make a motion.
There's a comment from the public just first. I know that the man that lives next door raises his hand. I'm still on vacation, okay?
What did I do?
No, I don't.
Bud, Bud would like to speak.
You're the man that lives next door.
I just want to, I think this, you know, I think this is a good deal for the town of Groton and town of Dunstable. I think that this should be looked at as all public companies, even though this is this is not a public company, as a CFO of a public company. I was on a board. The board was the CEO and the board director said, if you can do your job, you can be on another board. Your job cannot degrade from what you're doing. And you can easily find time to do a board, just like you can find time for Dunstable for 10 or 20 hours, whatever it may be, because there is vacation time this nights, this weekends, there's calls in the car, so. And I think the right way is for Dunstable to pay Mark, just like a board would pay me to work for them as a consultant. But my day job and my full-time job was with Progress Software and I made sure that any conflicts was Progress Software getting first and it worked out fine. Everybody does this. This happens to be a bit different, but I think helping Dunstable is the right thing to do and I think Mark can clearly do it. He's got the talent to do it and I think the town should let him do it and if it if it does suffer, I'm sure you'll know it, which I don't think it will, and then you could just end it like John said.
Yeah, I mean, I have a full-time job and then come here and we put in 20 hours a month to be. a month to be on the Board of Selectmen. So, I'm not so sure it's much different. So, appreciate that insight.
Of course, you didn't recognize Bud, but you didn't recognize Bud.
You know what? I, I, I'm still in Bora Bora and you can't hold that against me, okay? Go ahead.
Uh, so, um, I think it, it's important to be a good neighbor to Dunstable, but I think if this was something that could be handled in, you know, a day or two's worth of conversation and I would be happy to have that happen without even money transferring. Uh, I also think that the charter, the way it's written, it says, "This is a full-time job and, um, we should not..." Uh, the concept of being on his own time, of course, he can make his own decisions. But as I said last week, uh, and I've said in other situations, I am not in favor of people not taking vacation. And I think that that adds a kind of stress that is not good for individuals and families. Uh, and I think, you know, Mark is a salaried employee, which means, and we all know, he is available to us pretty much around the clock and is responsive to us. And he does a good job at that. Sometimes I think he should put some boundaries on that and have some time off for himself. Um, I, I'm not-
You're gonna hear that from today.
I'm not really, uh, I, I, I think that Dunstable has other options for paid consulting about how to solve some of their problems through the associations that we all belong to. Um, so, I'm not gonna vote in favor of this.
I respect your opinion, Becky. I really do.
Any other discussion? All right, Allison, I apologize. I didn't pick you up earlier.
That's fine. Um, I move that we authorize the town manager to take employment from the Town of Dunstable outside of his current obligations to the Town of Groton. Um, I'm gonna make note that we are approving this in advance and in writing per the requirements of the charter, um, for a three-month period without further discussion.
Well, not, not to exceed, uh, the September 30th.
Okay.
To be revisi- yeah, not to exceed or to be revisited.
Yeah, not to exceed September 30th, 2018, without further approval.
Josh, you have a comment on the motion?
It's not so much a comment as a friendly amendment. Um, and said contract, uh, subject determination by the Select Board of the Town of Groton at any time.
Set approval.
I'm comfortable with that.
Set approval.
Did you get that done?
Yep.
I think that protects everybody, Josh. I like it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, just moving to second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor? Sitting, saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? It's 4-1-0.
Mr. Chairman, into, uh, ongoing issues, if I go through the list and, and if the board wants me to stop, I will. I'm gonna take A off. I think we successfully completed that ongoing issue. Uh, Prescott, uh, B, any questions on B?
The RFP is out and we're waiting on, people are-
July 26th.
July 26th, right.
C, you're interviewing, um, town council candidates next Monday, starting at 6:00 PM.
Correct.
D?
I didn't ask it.
Um, E?
Uh, what, what is happening with D? It keeps-
I'm working with Selectman, Select Board member Geiger on that. We will be bringing you a proposal sometime over the next couple of meetings, probably sometime in August.
Okay.
Um, E, I'm meeting with the Board of Sewer Commissioners to discuss this with them Wednesday. Uh, they're meeting, proposal for Wednesday.
Thank you.
Um, F? Sorry, wait a minute. Did I just, I asked about the signage on-
Yeah.
Is that what you're meeting with John and I heard about?
Yes, John and I working on that one together. Yep.
I would have thought that was the Tom Delaney issue.
Well, it'll go to Tom.
It'll go to Tom.
I'm just putting together some ideas of what might be done.
Uh-huh.
Delivering, that's all.
Okay.
Um, F, we hit a little snag with the start. We hoped to, we were hoping to kick off the senior center project, uh, today, uh, but our contractor has not got all of the filed subbid contracts. And before I can give them a notice to proceed, those need to be on file. They're working on that. We expect to issue the notice. All the insurance, bonds, all that stuff is done. But Greg, I will tell you, Greg Yanchenko is a stickler for procedure and process. And I'm very happy that he's that way. Um, so hopefully we have every, all the Ts crossed by next weekend. We'll kick that off next week.
Thank you.
Um, G, H, I?
When are we bringing the next, who's next on the list and when we're bringing them forward?
Um, well, actually, you've met with everybody, uh, with the exception of the police department. So, I have to figure out how I'm going to address that. I also have to come up with a, I'm working on a spreadsheet that will give you the status on everything. So, you have all that. So, all that's left is police. You've met with, oh, oh, police and council on agent. Uh, so I gotta bring Kathy in, uh, to a meeting as well. So, once those two are done, we'll be, you will have met with everybody.
Allison, yeah.
Yeah. Mark, can you review for me because I have completely forgotten what our plan is or how we're going to incorporate the fire department in this? I know they had a separate audit done, so they're not kind of part of the matrix work.
Correct.
Were there similar recommendations and that we should be discussing or what's our-
We've asked the fire department task force as part of their work to look at their strategic plan and come back to you with a formal recommendation. So-
There's extensive recommendations in it.
Right.
Correct. But they're going to look at it as part of their, as a matter of fact, they're meeting right now as part of their review and they'll bring that back to the Select Board. So, I was, I was thinking, once we get their report, Allison, I think that'll fall in place.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you.
Um, so, I apologize. Uh, when, when can we get Kathy in here?
Um, I'll work with Dawn and we'll schedule it. Probably, uh, maybe the 23rd.
About what's that?
Ca- you have the council on agent come in to do their update on there. There's a lot in the audit.
And then what I might recommend is after that, we consolidate on agenda item excluding the police because there's a succession circumstance there.
Yep.
And, um, then we review and make decisions on anything we're moving forward with or not, or where we are.
We'll have that spreadsheet ready to go.
And then put them to bed or, or green light or figure out if we need some things for town meeting or whatever. And then, at least that won't, will be done with one section of this and be able to move forward on something.
Well, yeah, because then we want to build timelines for each day.
Exactly. I want to-
Be able to do some tracking, to understand where each one of them is at over time.
So, that'll be something-
Where we'd like it to be.
We'll look forward to doing it in August then, to be doing that.
Um, J, I have an update. Uh, Representative Harrington's office is on it and they said it should be done before the session ends. So, hopefully we're gonna finally get a charter.
And the session ends?
End of July.
So, we're expecting the charter to be approved by the end of this month.
By the end of July. Uh, K?
I have something on that. Um, so, uh, my suggestion, I had reason to be, uh, thinking about booking rooms in the Groton in two years from now. Not for myself, for someone else. Um, and I realized that, uh, knowing what the level of tax would be at that point for someone who might be in the position to be booking a large event there, a lo- a number of rooms, that it would be fair if they knew that. So, my suggestion is that we ought to put this on our agenda to vote in the fall. Your question is how to account for it in next year's budget. Are, are we allowed to take a decision in the fall about what we will recommend at the spring town meeting?
I'm going to ask you, right, that's a great point, Becky. I'm going to ask you to wait until I present the budget because I have a proposal that I'm working on with the finance team on this. And I'll have a formal proposal for you in the fall, not before the town meeting, but as part of the budget, which will affect next year when it goes into effect. So, yes.
I heard some, I heard some, hold on, Becky. I heard something in your, in your, in what your story doesn't align with what this, what I think this meeting is about. So, either I'm confused about this line item or, or, or Becky's confused about this line item. To me, this line item indicates, how are we going to put the, what revenue number are we gonna put forward for next year's budget to account for how much we expect to get from occupancy tax?
Mm-hmm.
This doesn't, this, the occupancy tax has already been voted and it's gonna go into place.
I see.
I think that's what she said. She didn't say that?
No, I know, was she-
No, I'm, I am actually talking about something else.
She's interested in, in a year from now when we go to town meeting. Are we gonna leave it at 2%? Uh, are we gonna-
Your goal is to come back next spring.
That's what I'm saying.
And increase it to 6% next spring.
But we, but that's all, that's not been voted.
No, no.
And that's what I'm saying. Can we actually take that vote in the fall after town meeting?
Ah.
And so that-
So, this isn't-
So, that it is known that that's what we are gonna recommend it in this spring town meeting.
It's a point of order. This isn't on the agenda. Let's put it on an agenda item for, for next time we meet, that item.
Well, can he answer that question?
I can answer that question.
Is it even legal?
I would not do it because you haven't even implemented the, the 3% until July 1st of next year. And then all of a sudden to, all of a sudden, July 1st of 2019 is gonna go into effect.
Twenty years.
So, I would wait until the spring of the following year to implement it to the 6%. So, I would wait till 2020 to do that. I misunderstood your question. I'm gonna have a proposal on how to spend that money.
Well, I misunderstood. We've already voted, so.
For, for what you're trying to determine-
How to spend it. I already know how to spend it.
What you're trying to determine, it can't be greater than 6%. So, if you know-
Right.
If you go with 6%, you can forecast that it's not going to-
But, but it's only going to 3% in-
July 1st.
July 2019, not July 2018. Okay, I was confused about that, so.
Right, there is no, there's currently no-
I'm sorry, Mr.-
Local remacpancy tax.
There's a lot of wasted-
And there will not be remacpancy tax for one year from July 1st.
Right.
Or for one year, July 30th, June 30th, excuse me.
Um, L, on the proposed bylaw for the permanent building committee, Becky and I have come to a conclusion on it. We have a draft. I was gonna put it on your July 23rd agenda and to bring it to you for consideration for the fall time. I mean, I think we came up with a really good draft.
Please do.
However, the person who maybe was working on the, uh-
Major initiatives.
The what?
Major initiative.
Major initiative. It might tie in with this. So, if you could work on that before the 23rd. No?
Uh, not that I can't work on it. I don't support mixing the two together. Mark and I've talked about this.
Okay, all right, so we-
And if, if you want to take over major initiatives and merge the two together, then you can do that, but I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, so, we'll bring in-
We'll bring out bylaw.
On the 23rd, as it is.
Yep. Um, M, N, oh, and I have an update on N. The town clerk had hoped that by having the, uh, election on the same day as the state election would save us some money. It will not. The Secretary of State has told us you have to have separate checkers for each election.
Which they won't pay for, of course.
No.
Another unfunded mandate.
It's, well, it's, it's, I know, we can't put it on the ballot. We thought we could have the same election-
Separate checkers?
Yes.
You can't get in and, and get both ballots?
No, you have to, what, what, what the town clerk is, and I asked him if this was a nightmare for him, should we just schedule another election? He thought, keep it on November 6th. They'll work it out. It'll be a bigger turnout, which is important. What will happen is you'll have the two checkers sitting next to each other. And when you come in and say, "Becky Pine, Hollis Street," both checkers will check you off at the same time and hand you a ballot. But it has to be two separate checkers, two separate handouts. Don't ask me why. That's what the state is required.
Have to be separate takers?
Separate takers too. So, you'll, that's why it's, that's why it's the same cost.
Separate ballot machines?
Say that, we're talking about-
Separate ballot machines?
No, no, they can get, the, the, the machines will be calculated, will be programmed to receive both ballots.
That's what I meant by takers.
Oh, I thought you said at the end that people-
But the checkout people, the checkout people have to be different.
I'm sorry. I'm really not understanding anything you guys are saying.
The machine swallows it.
The machine swallows it the same way.
I have to say, the Commonwealth has made this extremely and ridiculously and absurdly difficult.
Yes, I will, I will say this. There is no requirement. We had asked the question, does it have to be at the same time as a state election? I asked town council that question and the answer was no. It could be anytime you want.
Of course it can be.
Well, we had heard earlier that it did have to be at the same time.
The town council said absolutely not.
They got a lot of feedback about that. Apparently, they've changed their minds.
Yes.
Didn't tell us.
Now, the one thing though, I will point out to you is, um, this may all be moved if town meeting doesn't pass the bylaw by two-thirds. So, just to let you know, there's gonna be an added cost for that election. It's, it's $6,000.
But we're still, we still follow through, forth with the process that we've already, which is, we're gonna have a special town meeting inside of town meeting.
Yep.
The first night of town meeting, excuse me, that we can open and close. Therefore, we can proceed to know whether or not we need an election.
Yep.
But it, it is the case, as I've heard from Mark, that our moratorium extension to December 31st, um, is not valid because we voted-
We have zoning plays.
A set of zoning bylaws. So, what we would be looking to modify are those zoning bylaws. And I'm not sure all those modifications, whatever they might be, require, um, a vote at the same time as the state votes. I think we don't, might only get into that if we want to say no to everything. So, we got a little more homework to do on that too.
Um, I was supposed to take O off the list. You directed me to do that last meeting. I apologize. That will come off.
Why are we taking that off?
I thought you told me that that's a school issue, not a board issue to take it off. I think that's what you told me.
Isn't the Town of, uh, the Board of Selectmen and the Town of Groton on the floor?
Yes, we do. That's why it's a town issue in my board.
Okay.
I understand. I have this agreement.
Then, then I'll leave it on. I apologize.
If they decide to go and build at the high school a brand new, we're gonna inherit that building.
That's a good point.
And Allison is our representative on that. Is that right?
No, I am. They asked me to serve and represent as the town manager on the, on the committee, on the building committee.
I think it's important to keep that on that a far-
All right, then I'll keep it on.
I don't think the school committee has made their final-
No, they haven't. They haven't.
They will be serving to get there.
But I was asked. Maybe, maybe, um, anything else on that? Um, P, I drafted a, uh, building fee waiver, um, proposed policy, which I will have on the Select Board's agenda for the next meeting for you to review and start discussing.
Is that the 23rd?
23rd, yep.
Okay. Um, I, I know we talked briefly, you talked, you had some suggestions. I have some suggestions I'd like to also put in writing for that discussion. So, I should coordinate with you.
Get it to me beforehand. Please do. I'll update what I put together. I put together something for you to debate. Obviously, I expect you to tear it apart.
Right.
Because that's what you do.
Nobody's gonna shut it.
No, I understand. I, I, I think it's a good thing for you to discuss. Um, Q, R, they're meeting tonight. And S, if you finish your liaison reports in minutes, I'm gonna ask you to go in executive session for items related to union negotiations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did we? I'm sorry.
John, please.
Um, driving back from Dunstable, um, Mark was sitting there and we were going over this list and he's gonna take the police off now. Um, and I suggested that we, we as a board probably need to think about putting the library roof on here because, uh, as I look at the materials they've sent out, that's over, probably over a million dollars. And, um, that's significant enough in my mind that, um, we want to keep it in our eyes relative to the financial implications of that.
So, the usual progress on that is we put it on as a regular agenda item to discuss and then we would pod, put it down to, to, so I'm fine with that being on the next agenda. And then it becomes an ongoing issue.
Because we will have heard about it.
Right.
When I read that, I also got the shudders and chills about what the cost could be. Would it make sense to see if the town would want to get a historic designation on the library so them could potentially tap into CPC funding? I think you can tap into CPC funding only on the original portion of the library building.
I understand that.
But I'm just saying, it doesn't have the designation.
It doesn't need it. It's in historic district. It's a historic building.
Let's put it on the agenda for the 23rd, please. And let's go through a lot of these are very good ideas. And I agree with you. I'd like to try to see what we can do to leverage different funds for this project.
So, I had a, a question on Q. Um, did you say we're, we're taking that off the list?
No.
We can't do anything on Q until the existing chief has had an opportunity, the new, the We can't do anything on Q until the existing chief has had an opportunity, the chief we voted in has an opportunity to tell us whether or not he's the police forces to request...
But leave it on there for now.
Okay.
As part of the discussions for his contract, Mark and I certainly covered this issue with him and said, you know, after you assess your department, certainly in the formulation of your budget, that the previous chief had come up with a proposal for adding...I asked him if he had looked at that. He said he had not. He said he would, but then I said, while you may get that document, you need to look through it with your own lens and make recommendations, and he said he absolutely would.
Okay, good.
Is that...
Absolutely spot on. It's interesting that he wore a blue shirt, not a white shirt tonight. It's interesting.
Tomorrow it'll be white.
No, I think it's going to stay blue. I think he wants it to be blue, with the rest of the tubes.
You're going to be in a blue one.
All right.
Liaison report.
You want to talk about laundry?
Yeah.
All right, liaison reports. Is there any liaison reports? Mr. Geiger?
I have two quick ones.
Yes, sir.
As the planning board member representative to the master plan...I'm sorry, as the select board representative to the master plan implementation committee, they scheduled a meeting for June 21st. I went to the room. There wasn't a majority...there wasn't a quorum, and so nothing happened.
Okay.
They have another meeting scheduled a couple weeks from now, I'll see. And the other thing is, it turns out that the Mass Municipal Association is having a meeting in Plymouth on the evening of July 12th, and I will be in Plymouth on the evening of July 12th, and so I'll go get a free drink. I'll learn something. It's an interesting topic on it, huh?
It sounded like a good program.
Well, we look forward then to feedback from that meeting. Appreciate that, John, spending your time.
I'll move back some cranberry juice.
All right, any other liaison reports? Any other business? Okay, I think we're ready to enter...oh, yes, minutes. I apologize.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 18th, 2018, as presented.
So excited about getting in here before 8:00.
Good.
Moved and...
Second.
Thank you. I was going to have to second again, you see that? Any comments about the minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of June 18th, 2018? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to enter into executive session pursuant to NGL Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargain and the litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I do so declare.
There are two purposes. One, to review tentative agreements with five of our unions, and two, to review a step three grievance filed by SEIU, 888 Town and Library Employees Union.
So moved.
Seconded. We'll need a roll call vote for this, please.
Manugian, aye?
P, aye?
Geiger, aye.
Yegan, aye.
Pine, aye.
No, I'd ask you to shut the camera off for now, but stick around. We may come back into public session.
Do you want to make more or do you want to do that?
Depending on how this executive session goes, we may be ratifying some agreements.
We discuss them in private, and then we have to ratify them in public.
But that's it?
That's it.
Resort, each resort.
If they're approved, we need to get it to the slide that's waiting. I'll set that up now.